For forty years because the city hasn't been managing it. So after, after that engagement, I moved more into residents association activities. And I was elected chairperson, I think in two thousand twenty-one. I'm not entirely sure, I can't remember. And I was- I think it was two thousand twenty-one. So I was elected chairperson of Board Seven, which then came on seventeen. And I, um-
You're a bit of a champion?
Of Board Seven, it was called at the time. And it's now called with Board Seventeen. And Board Seventeen encompasses a huge area from Sherwood Drive through parts of Mabelring, Sentoza, Bluff Hill, all the way east to King George Road, and then north to parts of Mount Pizzit. So I feel responsible for my Board. And I have been active in trying to improve the Board in various ways to the best of my ability and the ability of my capacity. So last year, I discovered by chance that there is a, a new Mabelring area plan which encompasses part of Board Seventeen and goes up to King George Road on the west. In that plan, I discovered by chance that an area, a small plot on West Road had been zoned for petrol stations. That's in a purely residential area. It was a remarkable discovery, Your Honour, because it's the only little spot on the map that was zoned for a petrol station. And it was opposite, I discovered later, a nursery school, directly opposite the nursery school, which is not permitted by Sarah regulations.
Yes, opposite is petrol station.
Literally on the other side of the smallest suburban road is a little nursery school or creche or learning club. So- So I was very concerned about that. I discovered that the residents have not been informed about this zoning and had not been consulted and obviously were upset. But they weren't really competent to know what to do about it. So I didn't pursue the matter. I was more concerned about McDonald Park at the time. But in January, um, I happened to, you know, in January, I learnt from another group of residents that another petrol station was zoned on the opposite side of a road called Argyle Road, which was opposite another school.
On the same road?
This, the, the-
Or the area?
The same, because this is literally opposite the petrol station. West Road goes like this. The petrol station is here, the block of the petrol station, and the school is there. It's literally opposite the school.
What was that again?
It's called, um-
So what, what did you find?
I found that it, I found that an EMA consultant had been going around asking residents their views about the petrol station.
Another petrol station?
About the second petrol station. Um, the residents were incandescent and they started mobilising. And I offered to help them, in my role as chair. Shortly after this, I discovered that another petrol station had been zoned on the other side of this road. So, Your Honour, the road is about five hundred metres long. It traverses a hill. It's a very narrow road. They've put a petrol station at one end and a petrol station at the other. There's a vast amount of traffic going from east to west because Argyle is one of the two roads where you can go from Mabelring into the city. And they were planning to put two petrol stations from five hundred metres of each other, together with the road with the petrol station on Tyrone, which is another five hundred metres away. Three new petrol stations. And the documents I've given will show you the maps of these petrol stations. I think it's marked, it marked off a pin? My markers have gone. So I've provided three maps. One is of the existing petrol stations plus the three proposed petrol stations. As up to, um, nine existing plus three more. And I've discovered that two more have been added to that. I've got a yellow sticker on mine, I don't know what you've got on yours. Yes, you've got the red. So the first map shows them-
Is it on the purple colour?
That's, that's the first map. And I've got a red arrow there showing one little blue spot.
Yeah, I see that.
That's the Tyrone Road, West, uh, Tyrone Road station that I mentioned to start with. So that's on the first map. The second map, which I caught sight of at the end, or towards the end of December, I thi- uh, sorry, the end of, um, February, I think, completely by chance, shows the two, what I call the two thousand twenty-four Mabelring Plan, with three fuel stations indicated in red. And the two last ones that I'm talking about are the ones on that straight road going uh, east to west on that map. Those two blue spots.
Well, that may be different places.
There's a three new petrol stations that I've marked. And on the next map, I show you the existing petrol stations marked in a sort of green blob. And the three new ones, uh, sorry, three new ones plus two extra ones marked in red.
So there, there are, there are, there are-
Yes, one's in Belgrade here.
Two on the, on the-
One's at the top, uh, uh, on the Grundy. One's on West Road, sorry, two, Tura on West Road and Tura on Argyle. And as I mentioned again, it's really important to, to emphasise that Argyle is a narrow road with a huge amount of traffic. There is a primary school in the, in the opposite side of that one on West Road. There's a primary school opposite the one on Tyrone Road. And the corner of Connorts and Malunga is incredibly busy. Traffic road heads to King George and all the way north and all the way south into the city. So, Your Honour, my complaint about the fuel stations, and that of all the residents, because I'm simply, I'm simply acting as their voice, is that we do not need those fuel stations. They've already got nine. And not only that, there are dangers. Sarah says that it's contrary to the law to have a petrol station on opposite a primary school or any public institution.
Are these petrol stations already functioning?
Um, the two on, the one on Tyrone is currently being dug. And the fuel tanks are ready for the fuel tanks. The one on Connorts and Malunga, the property there has been demolished and they've started work on the petrol station and they have their compressors working day and night to the detriment of the neighbours who can't sleep, obviously. The one that I have started being most active about is the one on the corner of West and Argyle, opposite the school. And that's where I concentrated all my efforts, Your Honour, and so has the rest of the community, because we think we have a chance of stopping that petrol station from being built. If we act quickly.
Which one, which one, Dr. Nen?
The one that we are hoping to stop being built is the one on the corner of Argyle and West. On this map, it's called Malunga and Sanita Kowira.
You see, the, looking at your map, there's- there's Connorts, King George somewhere, on top.
Yes.
And if you look all down, you have Sanita Kowira.
That's right.
Is that the, the, then the one which is next to San, Sanita Kowira?
There's a red dot, there was-
There's a red dot there, sure.
That's right, there are two red dots on the side.
And one is one half there, which is closer to Connorts.
That's right.
And, uh, Malunga.
That's right.
And, 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 yeah, well.
That's right.
That's one on top.
Those are the three that we're talking about.
Which one do you want to talk to me about?
The one that we want to stop is the one corner of Malunga and Sanita Kowira.
Okay, which is more on the right hand side of Malunga?
That's right. I mean, we want to stop them anyway.
That one's been developed.
Please.
Yes, the, the, the construction.
The, the, well, the one, uh, do you want, just the one that I'm referring to?
Yeah, this, this, the, the zone.
The one on the corner of Malunga and Sanita Kowira has not yet started construction, been lying empty. Right. So, um, that's the background to our problem. We have been trying, uh, we have been trying for six months to address the city of Harare and to discuss the problems specifically of petrol stations. Your Honour, I have been to see the city many times. I've been to see the directors. I have been, I've written-
Do you want to name them?
Um, sorry, I ha- I have, no, I haven't been to see the directors. I have been to see Mr. Nyabezie, who is currently acting town planner.
That one?
Nyabezie.
That's spelled?
N Y A B E Z I.
Nyabezie.
Nyabezie, right?
Yeah, yes.
Um-
Is he what, acting town planner?
He is, he was, uh, acting chief town planner, I think, at the time. I made an appointment to see Mr. Nyabezie. And when I arrived at the site, at his office, he had left. And he never, has never since answered my letters, my phone calls or my letters to him via the director of works.
How many letters have you written? We have copies.
I can't tell you, maybe two, maybe three.
But you have copies to that?
Copies are in, in-
Oh, there are, so you have them?
Yes. I have had one response to Mr. Nyabezie. And that was to one of my letters to the director um, of, of works. And that's marked here. I think it's marked in pink. Yes, in pink, Alixure A. Dated the fifteenth of April, twenty twenty-four.
So one, that comes, that actually happened last year. This response dated fifteen- It's the next to become a part of this, yes.
But what date, what date?
Fifteen April.
But there is one from, but it's quite, that's that.
There's one from Mr. Nyabezie to my letter to the director of works, which is dated the sixth of March. And is a follow-up to my letter of the twenty-ninth of February, which I sent him by email. And those are the first two items on Alixure A.
So, so, the response you brought from, that it was Mr. Chawatama.
Yes. Is, is the, is the response that Mr. Nyabezie wrote on the fifteenth of April, that was two months later.
You said, you said that it's been a while, Chawatama?
If you see so-
It's signed by Nyabezie, like this.
Oh.
Yeah, and, and you're signing there for Chawatama.
Okay.
I won't go through it, Your Honour, unless you want me to.
Well, okay, this is enough of it.
Okay. Um, so having received this letter from, which we actually had to go and collect from his department, um, I immediately, the next day, wrote an objection, which is on the next page, dated the seventeenth of April. And my objection, which you can see, is that Mr. Nyabezie said that told us that he'd given us the opportunity to object to these, to these petrol stations and we hadn't taken it up. That was the first thing he said. And the second thing he said, which is on the last page of Alixure, um, eight, and sorry, A, is that the plan was developed after a thorough and detailed scientific study.
Annex A?
Annex A, that's on A, 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 the first one.
And what is that B?
It's the same one with the map, Your Honour.
So, A and Annex A?
Yes, with the map, yes.
And this is, uh, in the example, I, the letter, the, the objection written, the thirteenth of April, it's, oh.
Yeah, that's-
Followed up by Annex B, which is the minister.
Yeah, that's right.
And the minister.
That's right. So the last letter in Annex A is the one I'm referring to, which is, I immediately wrote to protest to Engineer Chawatama and to demand to see the scientific evidence that had allowed them to put, uh, these petrol stations in our suburb and also to give us the proof that they had consulted residents as stakeholders. I received no reply from Mr. Nyabezie since then. Two mon- two weeks later, about. So-
What was it?
About two weeks later, I ran, yes, I ran Mr. Chawatama's PA to ask what had happened to my request for information in this letter that I've just referred to. And she told me informally that Mr. Nyabez- Nyabezie was no longer under the director of works. Town planning had moved to another, a separate entity within the city of Harare. And so, and also that Mr. Nyabezie had told Mr. Chawatama that he had responded to my letter and he'd given us the information that I'd asked for. And that is the last communication that I've had with the city of Harare, Your Honour. Because during this period, I was advised by people, including somebody in town planning, that the only recourse I could have to get relief from the situation was to go to the Minister of Local Government. And so I then, during this period, no, this was after, it was twenty-second of April, I wrote to the minister. That's Alixure B.
Yeah.
I went to see the minister.
You weren't still, near this in-
Sorry, I didn't go to see the minister, of course I didn't. I went to see Mr., um, Mr., Mr., Ms. Singa, who is the Deputy Director of Spatial Planning in the Ministry of Local Government and Housing.
That one?
Ms. Singa.
Ms. Singa?
And I, on, on his advice, I wrote this letter, which is now in Alixure B. And it sets out-
Did you get the response in the letter?
No, I haven't.
Yes, uh, for the record, the letter of the twenty-second of April, twenty twenty-four, which was written by a witness to the minister, I would like to make clear that the then minister then was the owner of Willsdon Chief Town Planner, not the current minister, mother of the person. You have not received any document?
I have received no written document apart from emails from Ms. Luwe and Ms. Singa here.
So, Your Honour, you were saying?
Ms. Luwe of this commission and Ms. Singa. Uh, they've, I've received email correspondence from them, but no written communication from any other official in the city of Harare or anywhere else.
Yeah, yeah.
With emails addressing the issues we addressed in the letter to the minister. The emails that you received from the two officials?
The emails I received from the two officials were precisely on this matter. And they're here in one of these annexes, annexes. They're in Alixure, um, Alixure. Sorry, I can't find it. From one of these- And I think it's probably-
But to confirm your complaint in the letter to the minister is the service one here?
It is.
The service one here?
It is precisely all the issue, I think, there are issue. Um, I would like to make it clear, Your Honour, that my complaint is not simply about the fuel stations.
Sorry, the complaint for the one?
It's not simply about the fuel stations. My complaint is a much wider and deeper complaint, which is about our rights as residents to receive- our rights as residents to receive information that affects us about the city plans. Our rights as residents to be consulted in a proper manner, which is not simply to be told what people are going to do. Proper manner of consultation is to engage people in discourse and arrive at conclusion. Our rights as residents to be responded to when we write letters under the Constitution, section sixty-eight. Our rights to return phone calls when we will. And all other rights about fairness and justice, which are embedded in the Constitution. Our main complaint, Your Honour, is that the city is not fulfilling its obligations towards residents. It treats us with contempt. When we ask for meetings, either the senior officials are not there or they come late. Your Honour, they say that we aren't concerned about what happens to our city.
They say you are.
The city says that- The city says that residents are not concerned about town planning and other issues. But they're wrong, Your Honour. All the remaining documents which I have in front of you show how much work we've done as residents to stand up against the city and its poor planning, to carry out polls and to submit petitions to the city, which are ignored. We've been to, we've had no response from Zara, except to say that they were looking into the problem of having a petrol station right next to schools. Your Honour, everything I have in front of you is a demonstration of contempt for the lives and safety of primary school children. And what residents say is of no account, because everything that they decide is decided in house to benefit the city and not to benefit us. That's my, what I have to say.
That is all.
Yes, thank you. My question is, I'd like to say that to ask for the, except to ask that he, 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 he stated that he formally admitted that he was in the city before the senior. Oh, sorry.
So for expressing the concern of residents in your area, putting that to the way the city is responding to your protests. I just think one, one, one brief one, one very brief one. The city, like all other cities in the country right now, are in the process of updating their master plans in, in response to the president's call for action. And this should be done by any of these matters for the city. I'm just wondering whether you were also part of the process in, 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 in civil Harare to inform them also about what's going on in your area? Were you able to attend their conversation meetings in regards to the, the development of their master plan? Do you support the participatory process?
Um, the only meeting that I was aware of was last week. And that wasn't a consultative meeting, it's simply an informational meeting.
So in other words, the, the, the city is not, the consultation process for, for this master plan is not as comprehensive as you wanted it to be?
We have not been consulted.